Good morning, everyone. Yes, I got it back. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency's Advisory Planning Commission to order. Today is Wednesday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is nine thirty-five, and the first item on our agenda is the roll call to determine our quorum, so I'll pass this to Tracy.
Mr. Oling.
Present.
Ms. Carr.
Present, thank you.
Ms. Chandler.
Present.
Mr. Drake.
Present, good morning.
Morning. Mr. Drew.
Good morning.
Mr. Ferry.
Good morning.
Ms. Ferris.
Here.
Mr. Hill did send a note that he would be joining us later. Ms. Setza.
Present.
Mr. Letton. Mr. McNamara. He was online, so hopefully he'll come back on. Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Stala.
Here.
Chief Steven. We see you there. Chief Steven will pop back. Mr. Tashara.
In the room.
Mr. Young. Mr. Steven, I don't see your mic.
It says he's connecting to audio.
Okay.
Uh, it looks like he got it. Mr. Steven, can you hear us? He's there, but.
We do have a quorum.
We do? Just by the thinnest of margins.
Just by one.
Okay, no one go to the bathroom? Okay. Thank you. We're there, and hopefully Mr. Young arrives. Okay. Uh, let's see. Tracy's gonna help me out next also with going over the remote meeting rules for the day. Thank you, Tracy.
For members of the public, to observe the meeting, go to trpa.gov. Under the calendar header, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, Hybrid Meeting from May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. To address APC members directly with your comments, raise your hand in Zoom by clicking Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen at the appropriate agenda item. With your hand raised, you'll be unmuted by TRPA staff and have three minutes to address the APC. If you have used the dial-in numbers to join us by telephone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and be unmuted. For APC members, if you wish to speak, you can also raise your hand in Zoom. You'll find the hand icon on the bottom of the screen. Remote APC members may not use the chat box to make any comments or to have sidebar conversations. Please, everyone, remember to mute your mic unless speaking to cut down on background noise. And finally, please, all remote members, turn on your cameras if you're able.
You did that so much better than I would have. Thank you. It's the accent. I mean, uh, it's so true. Lovely to hear. Thank you. Uh, on to item two, which is approval of our agenda. Staff, do we have any changes to our agenda?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
That's great. I will then deem the agenda approved as it was posted for the record. And I'll move us on to item three, which is public interest comments. And we're gonna hear from Tracy once again if she would go over the remote meeting rules for public interest comments.
All public comments should be as brief and concise as possible so that all who wish to participate may do so. Testimony should not be repeated. The chair shall have the discretion to set appropriate time allotments for individual speakers. Three minutes for individuals and group representatives, as well as for the total time allotted to oral public comment for a specific agenda item. No extra time for participants will be permitted by the ceding of time to others. In the interest of efficient meeting management, the chairperson reserves the right to limit the duration of each public comment period to a total of one hour. Written comments received by four P M. yesterday were forwarded to the APC members before the meeting's start time. Late comments may be distributed and posted after the meeting. Any unheard comments can be submitted via email to publiccomment@trpa.gov. Please include the meeting information and agenda item in the subject line of your email. Oh, hang on. Please note, the Advisory Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public that are not listed on this agenda.
Thank you so much, Tracy. So for any members of the public wishing to address APC during this open public interest comment period, please either come to the podium or raise your hand virtually on one of the various methods that Tracy just described, and we will call on you. No one in the room, so we'll go online.
Mr. Chair, we have one hand raised online. Doug Flaherty, please unmute to make your comment.
APC committee members, Doug Flaherty, calhuffingair.org. Many believe a public vote of no competence in the TRPA is now in order in connection with TRPA's pro-growth, pro-developer, and pro-international destination recreation project and code change approvals. This additionally, in connection with the failure to prevent, reduce, the microplastics, algae, aquatic invasive species, and human overcapacity crisis. Caught up in regulatory capture, this includes the ongoing manipulation of threshold language, entertainment days to avoid any real accountability. Everyone knows the Lake Tahoe Basin is out of harmony and out of equilibrium, but TRPA board and committee members continue to rubber stamp TRPA's staff findings and suggestions, failing to provide new leadership prioritizing true cumulative environmental analysis and public safety over pro-growth and failing to ask relevant hard questions of the staff. The lack of leadership provided by the TRPA and the APC since two thousand and twelve continues to degrade the lake and jeopardize public safety in connection with increased human capacity. And most recently, within town center choke points and dense human recreation areas, which could easily lead to loss of life during wildfire evacuation. The lack, this lack of confidence in the TRPA has been played out recently with the filing of two lawsuits connected with area plan and code of ordinance changes were approved upon TRPA's continued findings of no significant environmental effect. This utilizing the TRPA sham desktop environmental checklist, which consistently circumvents comprehensive cumulative environmental analysis and prevents a cumulative supplemental E I S since the adoption of the two thousand and twelve regional plan. The recent court ruling in favor of the Sierra Club in connection with the Tahoe Keys herbicide use further demonstrated TRPA's ineptness as they bend over backward to approve this three-year test. These lawsuits have been joined by a constant barrage, local, state, and international news articles driven by TRPA's continuing demonstration of mismanagement, which also, um, involves manipulation of the Nevada Open Meeting Law. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment.
All right, thank you, Catherine. I'll move us on to item four then, which is disposition of minutes. We do have a draft set of minutes from our April ten, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. They are on page five of your packets. Thank you to my co-chair Ellery for chairing that meeting in my absence. I appreciate it. And do any APC members have any questions or comments on the minutes? Mr. Tashara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just some minor ones, uh, just a consistent spelling of Ann Nichols, which is without an E at the end and does have an H in the middle of the last name.
Thank you. Do you have a page number on that one, or?
Yeah, it's mostly on, uh, the front page, page five of the.
Okay.
Thank you, Tracy.
Any other comments, questions, APC members online? Okay, not seeing any, so I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve as amended.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, I believe we don't need a roll call on this one, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any objections or abstentions?
I abstain.
Mr. Drew abstains.
I was abstaining, dude. I wasn't.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, thank you.
I abstain as well.
Mr. Drake, three abstentions? Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Okay, on to the meat of our agenda. Item five, public hearings. Item five A is the discussion and possible recommendation for approval of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances supporting climate resilience, affordable housing requirements for condominiums, and design standards for mixed-use development. Information can be found on page thirty-three of your packet. And I will pass this to Jacob Stock with TRPA to present on this item. Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Advisory Planning Commission. Um, my name's Jacob Stock, and if this is the meat of the meeting, then I'd say it's more like a charcuterie board of different meats for you to sample. Um, it's a, I'm here for a public hearing, um, and request to consider a recommendation of approval for adaptive code improvements. Uh, these focus on climate best practices, outdoor lighting, standards for mixed use, and affordable housing in condos. You get a little taste of the, of the variety that, that I'm bringing to you today. And this should feel like deja vu, um, because I did give this presentation, uh, to you in February as an informational item. And we've considered your suggestions. We've also gone to APC twice, including for a recommendation last month, and they did, uh, recommend adoption unanimously last month. So I'll do my best to summarize what I've already, uh, presented to you in the past, uh, and really focus on what we've changed since, uh, the last time I brought it to you.
We've been to RPC twice. You, this is twice for you today.
Right.
You say.
Sorry, I said APC.
Yeah.
My apologies. Good catch. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that was, I did read that in the staff report. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, good catch. So, yeah, this is the second presentation to you. Um, and I guess we can move on to the next slide. Thanks. So this is responding to board direction, and what we've done with this package is really incorporate priority, priorities of the board that don't fit neatly into a strategic initiative, but are still important, important no less. So it's generally split, this proposal is generally split into two parts. The first are climate amendments that we've been working on for a couple of years. Those include amendments for dark sky preservation, so new standards for dark sky preservation. And then, uh, the second piece is mixed use and affordable housing standards that came up through the Washoe-Tahoe Area Plan Amendment that you all may remember from, uh, last summer, but if you don't, I'll refresh your memory. All of these are aimed at adaptive management of the code as new issues and technologies arise. Uh, next slide, please. So I'll start with the amendments, uh, related to climate adaptation. Uh, these originated through the Sustainability Action Plan. We held a workshop with the board in two thousand and twenty-two to prioritize, uh, actions from the Sustainability Action Plan that hadn't yet been implemented. So we included efficient lighting standards, standards for renewable energy, support for E V, E V charging, and, uh, and standards to address the impacts of large special events. Those were, were all elements of the Sustainability Action Plan that we brought. Um, we brought forward and, and did some research on. We had a group of graduate students from U C Davis from the Environmental Policy, uh, Program there. And they helped us research these topics, develop a draft code language. They facilitated a stakeholder input process that included, uh, local government, uh, representatives of local government, land use professionals, nonprofits, and Liberty Utilities. And then we presented their recommendations to RPC last June. We further refined and vetted, uh, that package, and of course, we presented a draft to you in February. So we've been moving very deliberatively through, through this process, and I think we've gotten some great input over, over the last couple of years. Next slide. Uh, so Exhibit B in your packet will give you a rundown. That's Exhibit B to Attachment A. Will give you a rundown of what's included in the climate component of, of this amendment package. We draw on, uh, local codes, experience of permitting staff and applicants here at TRPA and in local governments, the local governments that we work with. Um, the California Green Building Code, the Dark Sky Alliance lead, uh, we drew on all of these, um, best practices in adapting these amendments. Uh, generally speaking, the proposal includes, uh, includes standards mitigating uh, traffic impacts from temporary events, supporting appropriate E V charging in the basin, and supporting energy production with specific standards for the protection of scenic resources. And I'm happy to go into further details about any of these items, um, now, or, you know, in the question and answer period. Um, but importantly, what's changed since the last time I brought this to you, uh, responding to requests from RPC members, we're proposing a requirement for conduit in twenty percent of spaces and parking lots of twenty spaces or greater. As you may remember, previously, we were, we were proposing ten percent of spaces in lots of forty spaces or greater. RPC asked us to, to change it to twenty percent of twenty. Um, this aligns our requirement with the California Green Building Code, so developers are, and, and, uh, property owners in California are already used to complying with this standard. Um, importantly, this standard only applies when a permit is required for parking lot grading, so it's, it's when a property owner goes in to, to get a permit just for parking lot grading, then they would be required to put in conduit. Um, it does not require, uh, the installation of wiring or any charging equipment, just the conduit. At this time, you know, when a parking lot is being dug up and it's already, um, significantly cheaper to, to add conduit. Um, we're also working with permitting staff on a form to help guide applicants in completing the special event transportation plan, and you can look at Attachment E in your packet if you want to see a draft of what we've come up with, with permitting staff. And this is very similar to, um, to the checklist that the city of South Lake Tahoe already requires, because the requirement is also very similar. Next slide, please. So, uh, like I mentioned, we're requiring, or we're including a reorganization of our outdoor lighting standards with a focus on preserving dark sky resources. That's part of this amendment package. Long range and permitting staff worked really closely together to brainstorm, come up with ideas for balancing dark sky preservation with property rights and the ease of implementation for staff and property owners. So this includes requirements that outdoor lighting serve a functional purpose, that it not splay off-site. It sets a color temperature limit, which I like to point out, um, the lights above you. If you look at the light over, um, uh, Mr. Ferry there, that would be considered a, uh, cold temperature light. If you look the light, uh, next to it, that's a warm temperature light. So we're focusing on warm temperature lights, which are less polluting than cold temperature lights. Uh, it sets a lumen limit for, um, commercial properties and an after-hours, uh, light reduction requirement for commercial properties as well. Um, we're also codifying the requirement for a lighting plan, which is already required, but it's not in the code. So what's changed with this proposal? We're specifically allowing motion detection lighting or similar technology to comply with the light reduction requirement. So this adds more flexibility for commercial property owners to temporarily illuminate their properties for security purposes. Next slide. So the next item is, uh, mixed use. This is Exhibit A, uh, to Attachment A in your packet. And the regional plan identifies mixed-use development as a tool for energy conservation and greenhouse gas reduction. It's relatively simple. The idea is that you can combine multiple compatible uses on a property, and it reduces the need to use a private automobile for, for residents to access, uh, services. So we've not previously had a definition or specific standards for mixed use in the TRPA code, despite this being an important policy, uh, element of the regional plan. And this was really highlight, highlighted in the purbaning process for nine four seven Tahoe, if you all remember that one, and the Washoe-Tahoe Area Plan Amendment that came along with that. So we received direction from APC and from the board, uh, to develop mixed-use standards and affordable, and an affordable hous, housing mitigation for condos in Incline Village, and we later, uh, received direction from the board to apply those same standards, uh, to the, the regional level. Um, so we're following up on that direction here, uh, with this set of amendments. Next slide. So the mixed-use proposal that we designed, um, i- is really meant to achieve the energy conservation and greenhouse gas reduction purposes laid out in the regional plan, but also remain appropriate for the regional level. So we're not getting into really specific standards uh, for, you know, design standards for buildings. We're leaving that to local, uh, to local governments, but um, we're looking to define the proportion and location of non-residential uses in mixed-use buildings uh, and requirements for pedestrian access and design on, on street frontage. So just making sure that a mixed-use structure has an adequate mix of uses, and the street level is activated um, in order to achieve, uh, those goals set out in the regional plan. So what has changed since, uh, February? Well, both APC and RPC suggested changes to make these requirements more flexible. We have a lot of irregularly sized and uh, shaped properties in Tahoe. We're not on a grid like a lot of, uh, of other places are, so we need to build in a lot of flexibility. Um, so following APC direction, first of all, we've clarified that standards are not retroactive, so these only apply to new construction um, after the, uh, effective date of adoption. So we're not gonna make, um, existing mixed-use properties comply with, with these standards. They won't be non-conforming uses. Um, following RPC suggests, on a suggestion from RPC, uh, we're proposing to allow deed-restricted affordable housing on the ground level, where non-residential uses would otherwise be required. So for example, a developer could opt to build a, uh, rooftop restaurant and, uh, and not have ground floor commercial if that made, made sense for their development, um, as long as that ground floor commercial was uh, replaced with deed-restricted affordable housing, and there was adequate, um, non-residential uses elsewhere in the building. We've also simplified the depth requirement for non-residential floor area. I won't get into the nitty-gritty details of this. I can later if you guys want to, but, um, we really just want to allow more flexibility, uh, for developers, given, like I said, the irregularity in size and shape of lots that, that, uh, we have here in the basin. Um, and also, in addition, uh, for flexib, uh, adding a little bit more flexibility for the siding of accessory units to, to the residential component. So we, we've allowed, um, if, if a developer wants to come in and have a lobby on the street frontage, as long as the street frontage is still designed for, um, for pedestrian access, then a portion of the non-residential uses could be transferred to another portion of the structure. So, uh, next slide, please. Okay, so the proposal for affordable housing in condos, uh, is again responding to APC and governing board direction following the Washoe-Tahoe Area Plan. It's really recognizing the need to mitigate the impact of new market rate housing on the workforce housing gap. So we're proposing ten percent of units in condominium subdivisions are deed-restricted, affordable or moderate housing. This is the same standard that was applied to Incline Village in the Washoe-Tahoe Area Plan. These, these units can be on or off-site. They can utilize bonus units, but they must be new and equivalent units, and we're not proposing an in-lu fee. So where did this number come from? The Mountain Housing Council in Tahoe Prosperity Center, uh, analysis found a gap of just over five thousand workforce housing units for mo, lower and moderate income residents, uh, specifically. And this is about ten percent of the total units in the basin, so five thousand. Yeah, is, five thousand is ten percent of fifty thousand, which is the to, roughly the potential, uh, total units in the basin. So a ten percent requirement can also be found in Placer County in Incline Village, as I mentioned, and it falls somewhere in the middle range of, of the, uh, inclusionary zoning ordinance that was adopted by the city, uh, earlier this year. So we have, we have, uh, a precedent for this elsewhere in the basin. This proposal is not going to replace Placer County and the city's requirements, but would apply to jurisdictions that don't have their own programs. Um, and we plan on exploring more policy options for mitigating the impacts of market rate housing on affordable housing, uh, through the next phase of Tahoe living, so we're gonna keep rolling with this uh, adaptive management cycle as, as we do. Um, this isn't the last you'll hear about this. This is just the step. So what's changed, uh, APC, uh, last time I brought this to you, you suggested that, that we make, uh, compliance with this requirement more flexible. So that's where we clarified that deed-restricted units could be built on or off-site, um, and they could utilize bonus units. So we have some built-in incentives there and a little bit more flexibility as to where those units could be built. Uh, next slide, please. And so that's, that's it, if you believe it. Um, we want to hear your comments. We want to hear from the public, uh, and hope that you'll consider recommending approval, uh, in June. The board, the board will be hearing this item in June. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. Good job. Um, thank you for bringing this back with our, with our recommended changes. All right, APC members, comments, questions for Jacob? Yes, Steve, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Steve, to share up. So, um, in some prior presentations, I think I've seen every one of them, um, was the, was the, uh, mixed-use code language going to apply retroactively, and now it's, it's going forward, right? It's just going forward.
The, thank, thank you for the clarification. It, the mixed-use standards were never intended to apply retroactively, and so we've added an effective date into the proposal to clarify that they do not comply, apply retroactively. So there will not be non-conforming uses created by this.
That's exactly where I was going, because I made that comment at one of the other presentations, so thank you for that. And then, um, the other one was on the transportation plan requirement related to, um, temporary activities. Temporary events, over five hundred attendees. I suggested to, in a conversation you and I had, that, that TRPA provide a template for the transportation plan. A lot of these events are done by nonprofits, and they don't have a huge, you know, and if people submit different kinds of things to TRPA to try to meet this requirement, it seems like there should be a standard for that. Is that something you're prepared to do?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tashara. And if you look at Attachment E in your packet, I've prepared, uh, a draft of what something like you suggested, suggested might look like. Um, and so this is kind of a, a checklist format that would fit into the checklist that we already, um, require for a, a temporary activity permit. Um, so I'm definitely interested in, in hearing your comments now or offline, um, on what we've proposed in Attachment E.
I, I'd like to do that offline, and I don't know if there's any, you talk in here about, you know, if there's a taking of a lane or something like that, that typically also requires that permit from Caltrans or NDOT, depending on where it is, so I don't know if there's any coordination there. But we can talk about that offline. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Just to follow up on Steve's first question, just so everybody's clear. So if this goes to Governing Board in June and gets approved, does, does it then go into effect thirty days after that? And then how would you determine, sorry, if an applicant submitted an application for a development, is it their, is it their deemed complete date of their application? If it's, if it's after that date, it applies. If it's before that date, it doesn't, or is that too, too nuanced a question?
Um, this is John Marsh for the record. Um, so in TRPA first, it's sixty days for code amendments, uh, plan amendments, uh, become effective immediately. And, uh, in TRPA world, you, it's what's effective at the time. And uh in TRPA world, you it's what's effective at the time, the permit issuance. Um, so not at the time of filing the application. That that's the code that supplies, so um. There will be a sixty-day window that uh if you can get a permit action by that point. Uh, then you wouldn't be subject to these rules. If it's after sixty days, then whatever, then permit issuance would be subject to these new rules.
Okay, thanks. We do, we do a deemed complete date of the application, so it's just different than.
We we have.
Issuance, okay.
Right, we have a completion date as well, but it's not, you don't vest into that.
Okay.
Into the um regulatory regime uh at the date of application or completeness. It's at the date of permit issuance.
So theoretically, a developer's submitted application, the rules could change while it's between submitted and approved.
Correct.
Okay. That's a good clarification. Thanks. Um, other questions? Let's see, I'm gonna go on. Oh, um, who, yeah, Ms. Stoller and then Garth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thanks again for the updates and um the reminders. Uh, just for my clarification um for the um housing amendments. Um, you had mentioned that ten percent um could be either onsite or off-site, meaning the ten percent affordable or moderate housing. And I um just for my clarification for off-site, um would that be during the time of development, those would need to be. Developed as well, or would those off-site um units be somehow reserved for a later development?
This is Jacob Stock for the record. So. Those units would have to be complete before a certa- certificate of occupancy is given for the market rate units. Um, and they would, just to further clarify, off-site units would have to be built in a town center. So there is some location requirement there.
Okay, that's great. Thanks for that clarification. If I may continue one more. Okay. Um, also, um, in listening to the governing board meeting from last month, I remember member Aldine made comments about. Housing and the affordable housing definitions and was wondering if possibly we were missing workforce housing. Um, as as an element. So I just wanted to make that comment here. I I noticed that. That ten percent set aside is designated for affordable and moderate. And so just wanted to put that comment on the record that, in my opinion, I think it'd be more inclusive to include workforce housing as well. Um, to capture the folks who would otherwise be living outside of the basin commuting in to work every day.
Does TRPA have an established workforce definition? I think you do, so, okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Follow up on that?
Yeah, um, thanks, Chair. What is the established definition for workforce as opposed to this is achievable? Um, I would. I mean. If it's kind of being modeled after like basically the city's inclusionary ordinance, I would recommend that it. Fall within the affordable to moderate range. Achievable is a much higher um. Level of income slash lower level of affordability. So I just want to throw that out, that. To if, as staff mentioned, this has kind of been modeled consistent with. Uh, the inclusionary ordinance of local jurisdictions and as is written is probably more accurate than extending it up to achievable. Is uh my input.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just had a quick clarification for the record related to the definition of workforce versus achievable. Uh, I believe Ms. Aldine's comment was specifically asking if we had a definition for workforce housing, and we do not. Our definition is for achievable housing, which effectively encompasses people who are working in the basin, but we don't call it workforce, and we. Have left the term workforce to be more general um and not defined in our code.
And just one last thing about achievable, there's no income cap on achievable. It's a it's a locate workforce location requirement. And in a deed restriction.
Right, yeah, that makes sense to me. Well, I I would still um. Like to comment that to me, it would make sense to include that definition here as well, achievable. Um, the price of housing here, as you know, is very expensive. And for for folks who work in the government sector, who work in the healthcare industry, who. Um, you know, teachers who may have um. Income that exceeds that affordable or moderate income. It's still very difficult for them to live in the basin, I believe. So I would. I would suggest that as just a comment, but I'm not going to try to wrangle it in as a as a requirement here. Just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Good comment. Um, Garth?
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jacob. Um, my question is in regards to the uh proposed external lighting standards. Um, do these lighting standards only apply to new buildings, or will these standards apply to uh any sort of existing facilities?
So that's a good, that's a great question. These would apply to new and existing structures, these, so. The way that it gets into the way that our lighting standards are enforced. Um, which is two ways. The first way is through the lighting plan, so that would be done at the time of a permit application. And then the second way that lighting standards are enforced are by complaint. And so um. Those are, those are the tools that we have in in our toolbox, and I wonder if if John Marshall has more to elaborate on that or not.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's like most rule changes. Um, you would need to come into compliance if you're doing a project. But there's no requirement to retrofit automatically.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just knowing that there's some. I I I believe strongly in this issue and the protection of of our our night skies and and dark areas. And there's a lot of existing structures that do not comply with the existing standards. And will not and will continue to not comply with the new standards as well, and I would strongly um. Or I I would hope that the TRPA will continue to um. Enforce the rules and uh ensure that the any sort of existing problems that we have do come into compliance.
Yeah, we need some incentive program to for retrofits, which I don't know if Liberty works on things like that, probably, but. Maybe Jacob can solve that for us, too. Um, Mr. Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Jason Drew for the record. Um, like to go back to Ms. Stoller's comment. I think this is an important one we need to resolve. So the difference between aff- affordable, moderate and workforce or achievable. Um, so in this case, the way it's currently written, it is specific to um deed-restricted, affordable and moderate. Regionally, do we have another mechanism that we're using for the achievable housing? So in this case. Maybe you could speak to how this fits into sort of regionally what we're trying to do with housing. So in this case, it may make sense to leave this as. Affordable and moderate, because we may be dealing with um achievable in another location. Uh, can you speak to that so that that's addressed? Because I I I don't think we can leave this hanging. We we need to decide whether or not achievable should be in this ordinance or not.
Any Karen can help us?
Yeah, I.
Or John?
Yeah, it, all of the so-called Phase Two amendments that we just uh brought through you all last fall and the board adopted. Uh, the talk about height, density, parking and coverage. Applied to achievable, deed-restricted, achievable and moderate and affordable. Um. So that. That is the regional mechanism and all the local governments right now either opting in, having us make those amendments. Or presenting an alternative like Zach talked about, the city's presenting an alternative set of. Of standards to work on all three of those. So I think that answers your question. Karen can give you more detail if you need it.
So for, just to clarify, so for Phase Two, what was just adopted. You can, you can get additional height, density, coverage, et cetera, for achievable units. Not necessarily um affordable or moderate. And there's no percentages there.
Correct. So, I don't know, Karen, if you want to tag team on me here, but so. The achievable housing is incentivized in a number of ways. First, you get, you can use a deed-restricted unit. Um, or an, excuse me, you can get a bonus unit for achievable. So that's an incentive, just right there. You can avoid that cost. Um, then you can take advantage of the Phase Two incentives um that also promote. Uh, the full range of deed-restricted housing from affordable to achievable. And also remember that we did the ADU changes. Um, and you can put in ADUs if you for deed-restricted. And that's lim- that's not limited to affordable or moderate, so uh we were just working on a project where the deed restriction is for, they're putting in achievable units. And uh, so there's a, there's a range, and we've tracked uh the number of units that are being put down. You know, the different types, and it's basically affordable, because that's what you get uh public subsidies for. Uh, and on the private side, it's achievable. Um, so we are seeing achievable units come into the basin as a result of these incentives. But also affordable, what we're really missing is the moderate, because. That's the hardest to make economically viable because of the lack of public subsidies for moderate housing versus um affordable. Karen, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Karen Fink, for the record. I I think that captures it pretty well. I think the point is that um. When the private sector is providing housing, they tend to go for the achievable, because that's the most flexible. And affordable and moderate is the hardest to build moderate, as um John said, is the hardest, because it's hardest to get grants for. So. If you're looking to impose a requirement such as the these amendments, it could be appropriate to require to be affordable or moderate. Um, because that is, you know, those are harder to to get.
Is the deed restriction checked on those through an achievable income, or is it a workforce? Are you using the workforce must live, you know, must work in the basin thirty hours a week or whatever that one is?
So as of April in twenty twenty-three, we switched away from an achievable income cap to a workforce requirement. And in December of twenty twenty-three, we tightened that up just a little bit to say that not only um do the, do the, does the. Worker need to work for a business that has a tax address in the basin. They also need to show that their presence is physically required in the basin for at least thirty hours a week. So it's a pretty restrictive definition of workforce, actually.
Jason Drew for the record. So just to clarify. Staff's position is that based on the incentives that exist, you feel like the achievable housing. Need is starting to be met. What we're struggling with is the affordable and particularly the moderate, and that is why. This language as proposed is for affordable and moderate only.
John Hester for the record, yes, the short answer. Uh, and that's also what the Regional Planning Committee. Um, suggested or is recommending as well. And I think it'll also aligns with City of South Lake Tahoe's.
How do you feel about that, Ms. Stoller?
I feel much more comfortable now, having had this discussion. I really appreciate the conversation and and the additional information, so thank you.
That is, that's great news. Thanks, Mr. Drew, for pushing us there. It's good.
And if you have any more questions, we even have one more person on the bench, Alyssa Bedder.
Yeah, we need these, so you should.
Before the four of us can handle it, maybe five.
You can't. We're in trouble if, yeah, if we don't have the brain power in the room here. Okay, awesome. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Steve DeShere. So the Phase Two is what was litigated, correct?
It ha- it's in litigation.
Yeah, hasn't, right, so.
Correct.
But there's no injunction, so.
Correct.
So the provisions can be active, yes? Okay, right, just wanted to clarify on that.
Yep, thanks, Steve. Uh, APC members online. Now is your, is your chance. Any hands? I'm not seeing any. Everybody's good there? Final comments in the room? Everybody's good? All right, I'm gonna move us to public comment on this item. To participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov. In the calendar, click on APC Meeting, May eighth, twenty twenty-four. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. If any member of the public wishes to address the APC on this item. Please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone, and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. I'll go to the room first. Any public comment? None there, so we will go online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one hand raised so far. Doug Flaherty, please unmute to make your comment.
Thank you, committee Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org. This agenda item five A is in violation of NRS two four one point zero two oh. Three D one. The agenda description is too broad, as it fails to provide a clear and complete information. Of the agenda item. I refer uh the committee to item C, paragraph three, page sixty-three. Of the AG Nevada Attorney General of a Meaningful Manual. Uh, which states, agenda descriptions for resolutions, ordinances, regulations, statutes, rules, or other such items. To be considered by public should describe to what the statute, ordinance, regulation, resolution or rule relates. So the public may determine if it is subject, a subject in which they have an interest, which might lead to their attendance at a public meeting. This particular broadly uh worded description includes ordinance changes for ordinance eighty-seven dash nine as previously amended. And is hereby amended by amending chapters two, thirteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty, thirty-four, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, and ninety of the TRPA Code of Ordinances. So on and so forth. The agenda item is not clear and complete. Finally, you're back to, unfortunately, uh the APC is back to failing to provide the leadership. To protect workforce housing in the Lake Tahoe Basin. You have a golden opportunity to force a definitive definition of workforce housing versus achievable. You're missing an opportunity. You need to truly hold TRPA responsible for providing a clear definition of workforce housing. So as usual, one or two committee members raise a concern and you're tamped down by. Gaslighting uh information from the staff that moves you away from the issue. I'm very, very ashamed of the of the APC for not providing the leadership on this. We need to get to a definition of workforce housing. Income levels for gardeners, restaurant workers, hotel workers. So on and so forth have all been cut out of these regulations. Why are you doing this? You're doing it because it's stated by staff. The builders decide. What gets built in this community, and you guys rubber stamp it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Any response needed there?
Yeah, this is Graham Saint Michel. For the record, I I will ask John to help me out here if if needed, but um we have reviewed the. The agenda language, and um we feel it's it's sufficient, it's adequate to provide notice um that's required. Particularly in that it, you know, it it identifies the topics and then it refers to. The page in the packet where the staff report is, that all all further information you can read up on. On what's um what we're talking about, and includes actual, you know, amendment text in the staff report, so we feel this is, this is sufficient.
Fantastic. And did you have more, John?
Yeah, I just respond also to Mr. Yeah, I just respond also to Mr. Flaherty's comments. The income levels are clearly defined. And the requirement for workforce also known as achievable. And how, and Ms. Fink described how that's checked, that's clearly defined as well. So I just wanted to if the APC members still feel uncomfortable with that, we can discuss it more.
I mean, I'd like to add on too. I think we had a very robust discussion and arrived at a comfortable place that makes good sense considering the goals we're all trying to achieve here. So I just respectfully disagree that we are failing to do our duties. I just do not see that. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'll, I'll add to that the, the terms for affordable and moderate are defined by federal policy, state policy, industry standards. These are the accepted terms. They're based on area median income. So they're, they're well-defined and accepted across um, u-uniformly throughout the country.
Yeah, I think, I think we're on solid ground. Thank you all. I'm gonna, I don't see any more hands?
No, Mr. Chair, no other hands raised.
All right, thanks, Catherine. So I'll close public comment and ask for any final thoughts before I ask someone to make our first motion on this item. Any final thoughts? Okay, anyone care to make, uh, motion number one? We have it on the screen.
I do, uh, Jason Drew for the record, uh, I move recommend TRPA Governing Board approval of the required findings, including a finding of no significant effect for adoption of the proposed code ordinance amendments and as provided in attachment B.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone care to second that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ellery. And I will go to Tracy for a roll call vote on that motion.
Ms. Chandler?
Um, yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Orling?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yeah.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Chief Steven?
Yes.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. Setza?
Yes.
Mr. Zachary?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passed.
Perfect. Thank you, Tracy. Uh, we have a second motion. Would anyone care to make that motion?
I will. Jason Drew for the record. Is this the? I think we need the next slide.
Could we?
Oh, excuse me.
No problem. There we go.
Recommend adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash to be filled in, amending ordinance eighty-seven dash nine to amend the code of ordinances as shown in attachment A.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stoller. Tracy, roll call vote on the second motion, please.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Chief Steven?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Setza?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Orling?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
The motion also passes.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Uh, good luck in your future presentations, Jacob. All right. Hang in there. Good job. Okay, that, that concludes item five A, and I'm going to move us on to item five B. This is a discussion and possible recommendation for approval of the proposed amendments to the tourist core area plan mixed-use district regarding parcel number zero two nine four four one zero two four. And that's in the city of South Lake Tahoe. Information can be found on page one hundred and five of your packet. And it looks like we're going to do a joint presentation between Mr. Hitchcock with the city and Ms. Bettinger with TRPA, so welcome.
Thank you. Um, good morning, members of the committee. I'm Alyssa Bettinger. And I am here along with John Hitchcock to introduce the amendment or the proposed amendments to the tourist core area plan. We can go to the next slide. This amendment is a private property own-owner initiated amendment with the city. Um, this amendment has been in the works for quite a few years now. It is, um, uh, the proposed amendment would rezone a portion of the parcel um, behind Montreal, um, kind of behind the former really shopping center. Um, from recreation to, um, tourist core mixed use. Um, and John will get into more of the details of that, but there have been quite a few concerns over the years about this amendment. Um, and the amendment itself, as well as the underlying project, have been revised quite a few times to address those concerns. Um, the city council approved the amendment on, at their meeting on April twenty-third. Um, and as I mentioned, there is a proposed project that is, um, kind of underneath this amendment. And this project would be approved, um, but under, by the city, um, under our MOU with them. So the project itself wouldn't actually be coming back to TRPA for review. Next slide. So the yellow box, um, kind of in the lower right-hand side of the map um, is the amendment area. You can see that, um, there's a portion of the, it's, it's one parcel. Um, it was merged a few years ago, um, and it's resulted in split zoning. And so the, the portion of the parcel that's shown in purple is, um, currently within the tourist core mixed-use zone. Um, the portion of the parcel, the sort of back portion of the parcel that's shown in blue is currently zoned as, um, recreation, which allows, uh, for employee housing as well as single-family residential, but not multifamily residential. And so, um, the proposed amendment would move that blue portion of the parcel into the purple, which would allow, um, for the entirety of the parcel to be built, um, with uh, multifamily residential, except for the portion of the parcel that has the SEZ on it, which would be subject to our, um, coverage and SEZ restrictions. The resulting project, um, proposes thirty multifamily, um, units. I, I'll let John again get into the details of the project itself. Next slide, please. I want to note here that this amendment is a map change to the area plan itself, but it is not a, a map change to, um, our regional plan. So there, um, you know, it's a, it's a boundary change in the tourist core area plan. Um, but it wouldn't have any change in our regional plan, um, land use map, as you can see on the right-hand side. Um, right now, our land use map or our land use designation, um, includes the entirety of this parcel as tourist use. Um, so it would just be a change to the, the local area plan. Um, and another important thing to note here is that the whole parcel is included in the State Line Ski Run Town Center right now, so it wouldn't be a boundary change to the town center itself. Um, just the district within the area plan. And I know this is a little confusing, so happy to answer questions about this. Next slide. This amendment was brought forward to RPC back in July of twenty twenty-two, um, for consideration. And, um, the committee decided not to take action on it, um, due to a, a few concerns that are summarized here. Um, one was the, uh, low residential density. Um, so when the original amendment proposal came to that committee, um, they were proposing a limit of four units per acre um, for density on, on that parcel, um, and just given its location within the town center and, and wanting to create a walkable, um, you know, higher density area that supports transit. Um, there was concerns that this project would just be, um, you know, lower density than we want to see in our town centers. Um, additionally, as I mentioned, there is an SEZ, um, on a large portion of the parcel. Um, and so there were some, some concerns that, um, you know, this, the SEZ needs to be restored and protected um, as part of the amendment or project itself. Um, and I'll let John get into the details again on the, the actual project and what they're proposing. And then the third concern was that there should be some deed restricted units included in, um, this project. And so with that, I will turn it over to John, City.
Thank you, Alyssa. Um. Uh, good morning, Chairman Ferry and, um, Planning Commission members. For the record, um, John Hitchcock, Planning Manager, City of South Lake Tahoe. As Alyssa mentioned, item before today is the consideration of proposed amendment to the tourist core area plan. Next slide, please. The, the city originally received this application from HBR acquisitions, um, in twenty nineteen. That's how long it's been to rezone two parcels from recreation and tourist center mixed use. Um, one parcel is located adjacent to Van Sickle State Park and others adjacent to what historically referred to as the Colony Inn parcel. Um, the area to be rezoned has subsequently actually been merged with the Colony Inn, Colony Inn parcel. If the amendment is successful, the applicant is proposing to develop a multifamily residential condominium project on, on the project area. As, um, Alyssa mentioned, uh, thirty, thirty units in, uh, in total. Next slide, please. Um, here's the location map. Um, you can see, um, I highlight the three rec parcels. One is actually the Van Sickle by State Park. That's the entrance. And then the adjacent parcel next to it um, is owned by HVR acquisitions and then the parcel located behind the old colony insight. This was original, the original proposal was actually to, uh, um, amend the two parcels owned by HVR acquisitions, incorporate them in the tourist center mixed use of the tourist core area plan. Next slide. Um, currently, the recreation dictionary allows for various types of uses. That includes employee housing, single-family dwelling, limited to caretaker residence, public-owned assembly and entertainment created in three hundred peoples. These are like, uh, event centers. Outdoor amusement, for example, mini golf, uh, mini golf, mini golf courses and go-kart tracks, uh, local public health and safety facilities, cross-country ski courses, day use areas, group facilities, and also snowboard courts. So these are the uses that you can currently develop on those recreation parcels. Next slide, please. Um, staff conducted, uh, at the time, we did, actually did an online scoping session and we did receive public comments, um, and also comments from Leep State Lake Tahoe, the Calhoun Tower Conservancy and Nevada State Lands. The main issues that were raised had to do with scenic impacts, impacts of the adjacent restored SEZ or what was determined at one time to be restored SEZ encroachment on public lands and also parking impacts on Van Sickle State Park. Um, staff has responded to these concerns in our staff report, which is included as attachment to, um, your agenda packet. Um, it's our belief that many of these concerns can be addressed at the project level. We do move forward with a project at some point in the future. Um, for scenic impacts, as you may recall, when we adopt, when we adopted the tourist core area plan, then environmental analysis for that, um, for the tourist core area plan um, essentially stated that if a project were to move forward and implemented the community, the design standards of the tourist core plan, that impact, scenic impacts and community character impacts would be mitigated. Um, so any project moving forward would have to implement those design standards. So we don't see, we don't, we don't see a potential for scenic impacts from this project. And also I'd like to note that, um, there are no designated scenic resources within this project area. Um, impacts of Jason restored SEZ can be, uh, mitigated at the project level, uh, by requiring, uh, um, uh, uh, visually permeable fence to, uh, to restrict encroachment into the SEZ as well as also encroachment into public lands. We don't believe that there's going to be impact, the impact on parking to Van Sickle State Park. Um, city code requires all projects to have adequate parking located on site. There are exemptions that allow applicants to reduce parking as long as they can provide an adequate park analysis that indicates that they can reduce their demand parking ratio. Um, next slide, please. Due to concerns raised by the public as well as, um, Calhoun Tower Conservancy and Leep State Lake Tahoe, the applicant did revise their project description. They removed the parcel adjacent to Van Sickle State Park from the proposed amendment. That particular parcel will remain, will remain as a recreation designated parcel. Um, the proposal was also revised to limit the type of uses to residential linear park facilities, recreational resource management uses, so commercial and tourist combination uses would not be permissible. Um, and they also reduced the maximum density from four units uh, from twenty-five units per acre to four units per acre. And then we also incorporated this amendment, this private amendment into the city-initiated tourist core amendment process in order to kind of streamline the, the amendment process itself. Next slide. Uh, the next slide is, um, shows what the current, uh, project description that is being considered. So the proposal is to rezone that portion that is bounded in yellow on the map here to tourist center mixed use. Next slide. Um, staff subsequently presented the revised amendment to, um, the City of South Lake Tahoe, City of South Lake Tahoe City Council as part of our city-initiated TCAP amendments on June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Um, at the time, the council expressed concerns with the reduction in density um, in a designated town center and and essentially supported a higher density at this location. Um, they also directed staff to remove the amendment from the city-initiated process and move this amendment on its own, on its own merits. And that's why we're here before you today. The city-initiated TCAP amendments will come to you in the following months. Um, the applicant also revised the description in response to comments received from um, the RPC as well as the city, the city council to remove the density limitation. So the proposed density at this point is twenty-five units an acre. Next slide, please. Um, initial study was prepared. I'm sorry, let me go back. We did complete tribal consultation. Um, uh, we did not receive any comments or any requests for consultation from the tribes. Um, initial study was prepared and was circulated, um, January nineteenth through February twenty uh, twenty-six. Um, we did receive one comment, um, from the Leep State Lake, Leep State Lake Tahoe, reiterating the concerns they originally had with the original proposal. Um, the initial study concluded that there was one impact at full out. There's potential to have an impact on, uh, on the parking supply and there is a mitigation measure, TRAN dash one, which require the applicant, if they move forward with a project to develop, develop either off-site parking or submit a park analysis that supports reduction in parking. And next slide. And that includes, concludes my presentation. And as Alyssa did mention, the city, the planning commission did take action on this and recommended approve the city council. And the city council did, um, adopt amendment at their last meeting last month. And with that, I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John and Alyssa. Um, do we want to hear from the applicant team at all or are we, are we good? Yeah, if you, if you'd like to, I think this might be the appropriate time before we go in. What do you, is that okay, Mr. Marshall? Good? Mr.?
Yeah, I think you could, you could have that go now or do it in public comment. But I think it's appropriate to, to allow it now.
Yeah, I do too. All right, Mr. X line. Could you turn your microphone on, please?
Thank you. Good morning, APC members. It's a pleasure to be with you today. Um, and, and honestly, I think the context for today and the presentation, I'll be really brief. Um, in fairness to everyone's calendars, but the context of where we're stepping in today, I think is phenomenal. You know, the, the agenda item right in front of us was how do we bring, uh, you know, uh, housing to this community? And that's exactly what this amendment is going to do. And I think what's really interesting this, and I'll get into in a second, is you know, right now, the, the baseline requirement, you know, everyone just approved was ten percent. This project's going to be moving forward with seventy percent. And as I see this project, this is a great collaboration with the city, taking in the comments from the APC, um, you know, several years ago, prior to myself working on the project and really working with the community to develop a great project. And I need to tell you, I, I work on a lot of projects. A lot of them don't press go. A lot of them don't come to this agency. Um, and this is a great project. And I really want to, you know, kind of highlight why the underlying project, what it's going to bring about and, and why fundamentally it's important to look at it in that context. So as I previously mentioned, you know, to, to the, the density, the, the applicant has been working with the city in terms of meeting their, their density requirements, kind of in that evolving space. And, you know, we've been happy to work with them and, and collaborate and, and reach those density realities. As I previously mentioned, we're proposing two, um, two de-restricted units. Um, that's seventy percent of the units we're going to be bringing forward. And that's again, greater than the requirements that, you know, Hugh as a, a commission just put forward to, uh, to approval. You know, other things that really, you know, uh, are important is again, this, this. You know, other things that really, you know, are important is again, this this aligns with the city's density goals and and the goals more broadly of TRPA in terms of incentivizing housing, bringing density to the community and then setting aside at least ten percent, in our case seventeen percent of those units for 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 individuals that qualify. One of the things that really needs to be highlighted in this project is the benefits. Because when I look at a projects, we get into these moments and, you know, what are the benefits of the project that go above and beyond? And so it's really important to note that as of right now, the, you know, providing any deed restricted units isn't required either by the city or TRPA. So this isn't moving in advancement of what's going to be required. And so that's really important, you know, very proactive, you know, steps were taken. In addition, the the stream environmental zone that was referenced, the applicant is currently have engaged with TRPA and he's going to give you a quick timeline to that for multiple years and is advancing a very robust SEZ restoration project right now, prior to advancement of the project. So this project will bring forward SEZ, SEZ restoration. Importantly, it's going to be done with private capital. And we know why that's important because the role of this agency needs to be incentivized, individuals to utilize their private capital to solve our common goods. The public well is just too dry and we will simply will not have enough money. In addition to that, water quality improvements, there's, there's huge deficits in the city of South Lake Tahoe's water quality budget. This project's going to be bringing, you know, a couple hundred, approximately a couple hundred feet of linear public water quality improvements along Montreal. The area kind of behind Sports LTD who, you know, for those that are familiar with it. Again, all private capital investment to provide water quality benefits, all not required, all being done in benefit and above and beyond what's actually required to establish that community good. I would also kind of highlight in terms of scenic, this is going to be a tremendous scenic opportunity and benefit to the community. For those that aren't familiar with this area in town, right there, it right now, as you would drive by, you see a large transformer station being used to distribute our power throughout the community. As we know, and as our regulations cite, those are eyesores. That's our TRPA code, the city code specifically required that you screen those things from public view. This project will do that again, private capital meeting our community goals. As the map kind of represented, this is exactly what was the tourist core area plan was developed to do. We wanted to bring housing at a high density in a place where you could walk to uses, walk to transit and get around the community. That's exactly where this is located. Another item that John touched on is that there is no connectivity between this and the Van Seckel State Park. I don't have a slide in front of me, but as you look at the mapping network of Van Seckel State Park and someone that's bike there lots and lots of times, there's no interactive connectivity whatsoever between this space and the Van Seckel State Park. This area is rezoned, is, you know, currently will have no impact as I previously said. Another benefit I'd like to highlight is this project would also bring forward undergrounding of utility lines within this area. And in some that spends a lot of tire time on and another hat looking at fire issues, that's incredibly important again, to bring that incentivize of the undergrounding of lines. And really, again, it's approved by the city of South Lake Tahoe because it meets their goals, both at the planning commission and city council level. And that's really what the area plan amendment process was developed for, was to empower those local jurisdictions to start to make those calls. So, you know, I I would just close with this is a really great project that, you know, advances a lot of the things we're looking to achieve via public capital that aren't required, but simply for community benefit and a willing applicant that's kind of will to go along with the dance that we've had, you know, through these amendments in terms of density housing in the last years if we we've evolved as a community. So again, this is a great project. I'd like to invite Michael Wishmeyer up just to tell you the SEZ restoration story. Because again, I think it's important context because you get this at the end of the process. But for other peoples, it's a lot of, you know, time investment and money to get to this point, especially when you're doing things to improve our water quality and our SEZ zones in our community. And so with that, I'd like to pass it over to Michael Wishmeyer.
All right, thanks, Nick. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Michael Wishmeyer and I'm the owner developer. I'm a proud twenty five year local to this neighborhood and I'm generally excited about this project. This project is going to bring well needed visual relief to this area. Over the past five years, I've actively collaborated with the city, the TRPA and our local community to ensure that this project aligns with shared goals. The TRPA regional plan emphasizes reducing vehicle miles traveled and incentivizing walkability. The city has the tourist core area plan. This plan outlines a vision for the future of the tourist core. Its plan offers more guidance than both the South Lake Tahoe general plan and the twenty twelve TRPA regional plan. Its primary goal is the revitalization of the tourist core. This concentrated area focuses on redevelopment, achieving better energy use, lowering the carbon footprint, reducing the vehicle miles traveled, alleviating vehicle congestion, it minimizes traffic on city streets. The tourist core area amendment plan serves as a catalyst to transform existing conditions into opportunities for redevelopment. This area is point six of an acre. It borders a massive substation, it's inaccessible to the public and lies directly behind an already approved development. This parcel is situated in the tourist core area amendment plan, aligning with the TRPA and the city's desire for density and walkability to key amenities such as the Gondola, Transit Hub Lake, downtown and casinos. I'm generally enthusiastic about the positive impact this project will have on our community. The SEZ restoration journey, what happened and the progress. In twenty twenty, I learned that Tahoe Regional Planning Agency had deemed the twenty thirteen SEZ restoration efforts a failure. While I had no knowledge of this even failing or direction on how to fix it, I believed it was in everyone's best interest using my own funds to ensure a functional SEZ rather than allowing it to become a desolate dust bowl. Due to the disruptions caused by COVID nineteen pandemic, it wasn't until twenty twenty one that I could reconnect with TRPA Representative Paul Nielsen onsite to assess the situation. Together, we concluded that we needed to understand the reasons for the failure before formulating a restoration plan. I engaged with three engineering and environmental service companies, ultimately selecting hydrologist David Hagan and soils expert geologist David Herzog. The next steps were to observe a full year seasonal cycle of water flow to gain comprehensive insights. However, setbacks arose in twenty twenty one with the Cal Door Fire. Cal Fire stored heavy Amtrak equipment on the restoration site resulting in significant damage. In twenty twenty two, it was determined that the cause of the restoration failure was the flow ditch wasn't elevated sufficiently in the original restoration to overflow and saturate the restoration area. Instead, erosion of the flow ditch restricted the overflow, leading to minimal water reaching the restoration site. In twenty twenty three, we installed piezometers to monitor soil moisture levels and understand water circulation patterns. In June of the same year, we submitted an application to the TRPA for repair work, including light grading and the installation of a check dam. However, TRPA's response time for applicants is six months. In November twenty twenty three, a meeting was convened onsite with myself, David Hagan, David Herzog and TRPA Representatives Paul Nielsen, Trevor Smith and Alison Borowski. We collectively affirmed that we had the right team and plan for restoration and plans to revisit the application this month of twenty twenty four and beginning of the grading season. At present, I am eagerly awaiting the TRPA's approval to proceed with the restoration efforts and I'm fully prepared to mobilize as soon as I'm giving the green light. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wishmeyer. Appreciate it from the applicant team. I think we have the full picture. I just want to clarify, we're not approving the project today. We're approving the area plan amendment, right?
That is correct.
To make sure everybody's clear on that. The city will approve the project.
Yes, the project itself will be a discretionary review process and will go to planning commission.
And you can handle that through your delegation of authorities to TRPA. Yeah, okay, perfect. Let's go to APC members now for comments, questions. I'll go to Mr. Drew.
Jason Drew, for the record, could you go back in in the first presentation, there was a slide, you had two pictures. One was the area plan land uses, one was the regional planned uses. Can we pull that slide back up? Okay, so thank you. Fundamentally, we're approving the area plan amendment. So can you explain why was it zoned, why was the back part of this parcel that was formerly zero one one recreation originally, but in in the in the regional land use designation, it's identified with it as tourist? Why is that different exists?
For the record, John Hitchcock, so prior to the tourist core area plan being adopted, this was the ski run community plan. And those parcels in a ski run community plan were designated as recreation. And when we went through the tourist core area plan planning process, we decided to keep that original designation carried over into into the tourist core. That said, those recreation designation is still in the tourist core and the over the overlay designation is tourist. This just has to be a more specific zoning designation in the plan itself.
So fundamentally, the decision we're making is for this amendment is that the only thing that's changing is changing that designation from recreation to
Mixtures.
To mixed use.
Correct.
Okay. And it's within it's within the town center boundary. So I would assume that when the city put the area plan together, and I think I was actually on the planning commission when we, this area plan went through. I would assume that the basis of putting the 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 town center boundary around it was that you would want to have the uses that were allowed within town centers and incentivized to be within town centers at the time that that designation was put in. So even though it had that that recreation holdover from the previous community plan, the idea of putting it within the town center boundary, was that the intent of the city at the time was that you'd want to apply the 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 benefits and incentives that that exist for town centers?
Yes, for so things like coverage incentives, height, density and things like that to those parcels. However, when it came to actually does given it as actual zoning designation, we decided to keep the existing designation that was came over from the state line ski run community.
From the city's perspective, is i- is there any advantage to keeping that as a recreation land use?
Well, it's been, how many years it's been since we, the state line ski run community plan was adopted and we haven't seen any development potential on this. No one hasn't come forward with any sort of recreation type project since nineteen eighty seven. From the city's perspective and actually even from, you know, California legislation, you know, the city will, we will take it, you know, we will take advantage of looking at parcels where we can rezone to, in order to encourage incentivize more housing of all, of all income types.
Okay, and then for for TRPA staff, given that this parcel is within the town center boundary, it seems like it creates challenges for actually being able to apply the incentives that we want within town centers when it has a recreation land use versus a mixed use land use.
Correct, yeah. From our perspective, it is, you know, within the town center boundary, it's designated as tourist and, you know, per our land use designation. So it it is, you know, this this amendment is conforms with our regional plan maps.
Thanks, Jason. Other comments? Ms. Dohler?
Yeah. Thank you. Originally, you had received comments from the CTC and the Division of State Lands regarding potential impacts to the historic character and scenic quality proximity to Van Seckel State Park. Have you followed up with those agencies and how do they, how have they responded since?
Commissioner Sola, yes, we did follow up particularly Kevin Pryor. At CTC, we continue to have discussions with them. Because of their input, we we made a change to the amendment to remove the parcel adjacent to Van Seckel because we felt that would probably have the biggest impact on the character of Van Seckel State Park. However, although the CTC did comment at the very first public scoping meeting, they have not commented since in the other public workshops and 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 planning commission and city council meetings we've had.
We did also follow up with CTC staff a couple of days ago and they have no comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Hillary. Just to clarify, the the recreation parcel that's been mentioned a few times that you decided to take out of this package, is that one of these blue parcels that we're seeing on this map? Is it the oh oh three one? Okay, so that was going to be included in the the request to go from rec to mixed use also?
That was correct and it was and it was removed because of a public comment received and concerns with impact to Van Seckel State Park.
Okay. Got it. So there's still going to be two, looks like rec zoned parcels still within the town center boundary of tourist.
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions, Garth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question about the stream environment zone that's currently proposed to be restored due to the previous failure from when the Colony Inn was removed and then coverage banked, whatever. The proposed restoration of the SEZ is not connected in any way to the existing project. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. There's, so for this amendment, the zoning amendment, there's no nexus between amendment itself and the SEZ restoration. Remember, per TRP regulations, we can't build in an in an SEZ and required also set the any sort of building was, I believe it's ten feet, ten feet back from SEZ delineated areas, but what the applicant is offering to do is as part of their project moving forward is to restore that SEZ site, which that restoration was required as part of the Colony Inn project when it was, when it was demolished.
But but regardless, if the if the proposed project is not approved, this site still has to be restored. Is that correct?
So this this site has a tortured history. And the agency feels it's better to, you know, let's get a good restoration on the ground. And the landowner is has agreed to do that. Some of the 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 facts in the past is that there was a restoration, TRPA signed off on it as adequate and then it subsequently failed. And so there is a debate as to whether or not if we were to pursue purely a enforcement action, what that would result. So rather than do that, we were working cooperatively with the landowner. If the project gets approved and fails to be built and the restoration is not undertaken, then we'll assess the situation at that point and determine how to move forward with the restoration. A very lawyerly answer, I apologize.
No, I know, I understand and I do know that it has a tortured past and I just, it's, it's very important area being immediately adjacent to, you know, all the other SEZ that's around there. And so I would really like to be able to see that restoration project move forward regardless. Thank you.
Thanks, Garth. APC members online. Any hands there? Okay, I don't see any. I I just had a couple clarifying questions. On one of your slides, John, you said the density was reduced to a maximum of four units per acre. Is it, was that like a, I just, that wasn't clicking for me?
After the first scoping meeting, with concerns on scenic and community character and impacts to Van Seckel State Park, the applicant proposed to reduce the number of units down to four units per acre. However, subsequent, you know, public workshops we had, including with RPC as well as the city council, the concern was that this is in a town center and we should be maximizing density, not reducing density. And so, so the project description was revised a third time to remove that limitation.
Okay, got it. So this, that was a prior amendment, not what's currently happening. Yeah, okay, because we were talking thirty units per acre.
It's twenty five units per acre, but their their proposal right now is thirty total units. At twenty five units an acre, you can potentially get up to nine ninety four, yeah, ninety four, but I don't, coverage wise, height wise, you're not going to get there.
Right, okay. Thank you for that. Also, I saw in the staff report, I know we're not talking about the project.
Also, I saw in the staff report, I know we're not talking about the project, but just a quick clarification. I thought I saw three deed restricted units?
Yeah, that's, that's an error. It's actually two deed restricted units.
Okay.
Yeah, in the city staff report, we mentioned two, I think it was in the TRPA, it's three, but the correct number is two.
Okay, two units which equated to seventeen percent. Okay. That's a good clarification. And then um two more questions. One is on the league and I, I don't, I just don't see them on public comment. So we've talked about CTC and NDSL, but I also heard concerns from the league. Have those been addressed?
Yes, we did address them and we did include our responses to their comments in our final uh, initial study mitigating that deck. Um, a lot of their comments had to do with, they believed that it was open space, which it's not, it's actually designated recreation. Um, the other comment they had was um that the SEZ should be restored. Um, which that is gonna likely happen. Um, and then they also made a comment that the rec parcel was actually not in the town center when it actually is in the town center.
Okay. Thank you. My last question is on the city's TCAP amendments. You said that's moving separately. I just wanna make sure this is kind of a one-off, so I just wanna make sure that uh, it seems obvious, but just to put it on the record, the city's intent would be through that amendment process, which is more comprehensive, not to fickle or change anything that we're doing here today would remain consistent?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, um, we, we have the city initiated uh, TCAP amendments that's going to planning commission. Um, I believe next week. And then we'll be going to city council in uh, June and then we'll bring forward those amendments to TRPA for cons- for consideration. And those, the city, city initiated TCAP amendments is obviously uh um, more detail. And those amendments are to get our area plan in line with the phase two amendments.
That makes good sense. Okay, that's great. Thank you. Everybody good here? Okay, I'm gonna move us to public comment on this item. To participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov in the calendar, click on APC meeting, May eighth, twenty twenty-four. There you'll find a link to this webinar. And if any member of the public wishes to address the APC on this item, please either come to the podium. If you're in person or raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. I don't see anyone here, so we will go online, Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no hands raised to comment online.
Okay, no public comment. You must have done your homework and I will close public comment. Any final discussion before we entertain some motions? Jason?
Spilling water here.
I got spill.
Um. Keep it away from the, the computers. Um. Thank you.
That's right. That's right. Inaction. Um. A, a couple of things, I, I think uh it, it can get a little complicated when we're talking about the amendment versus the project and we're only making a decision on the amendment uh, this morning. And so in that light, given what we've talked about previously, uh, and knowing that mo- majority of the SEZ is on the parcel that is not proposed for change. Uh, these are the kinds of um, planning level changes and uh, area plan level changes that I think are appropriate. Um, in order to achieve much of the discussion we had on our previous agenda item. So uh, in the future, I think this is a good example of as, you know, future area plans happen and amendments happen, these legacy zoning issues that, you know, are we, we, this could have probably been taken care of when we approved the area plan, you know, back ten years ago. Um, so I think these are the kinds of things that we need to do if we wanna incentivize and get the, the the zoning in place to have the projects that we wanna see happen within these um, town centers. And, and that is the, the key on this piece. Um. The SEZ is primarily on the parcel that is not being proposed um for change, uh, that, that legacy sliver parcel in the back. The, these are the kinds of common sense changes that we need to make uh, in these area plans. My firm and I have, we've been asked to weigh in on this legacy colony and parcel multiple times over the last fifteen to twenty years. Um, and so leaving that parcel out uh, and having the restoration occur on it is, is certainly something that would be great to see happen, but it's really separate from this decision. I think this is a planning level decision about, you know, what makes sense from the perspective of how parcels should be zoned. And, and in my opinion, you know, that, that probably should have never been left uh, recreation originally. And so um, that's just, I think, something we need to keep in mind because it, it has gotten a little confusing um, with the, the, the proposed decision this group is making versus the project. Yeah, we do, we do these like nine, four, seven, which was brought up earlier, Washoe County area, Washoe County area plan amendment request, but we talked mostly about the project. Um, it helps to have the context. I agree, clean, you know, take advantage of these cleanup issues. Makes good sense, so.
Mr. Chair, this is Kevin Drake online.
Hi, Kevin. Go ahead.
I'm kinda dovetailing on what Jason said. I guess I have a natural tendency to proceed with caution when we're talking about area plan amendments, especially when the impetus or sort of what shines a light on the need for the amendment is a proposed project. But that's usually how this happens. Like Jason said, we're doing some what I do consider to be basically cleanup from a land use standpoint. And it often takes a project proposal to shine a light and kind of illuminate these these hanging chads, if you will. Um, and at the end of the day, I think the direction we're going to increase density and, and add the potential for housing within a tour- tourist core area plan and within the town center boundary makes sense. I think this location is well suited for some housing units. It's very walkable to um, to a lot of nearby facilities. And the issues around the SEZ have been addressed through a lot of creativity with the the town and TRPA. So I'm comfortable with this. I think it's smart planning.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. I wanna go for a motion?
I agree.
All right.
Make a motion.
Let's go for it.
I move to recommend TRPA governing board uh approval of the required findings, including a finding of no significant effect for adoption of the proposed tourist core area plan amendments and as provided in attachment D.
Thank you. Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Mr. Drew. And over to Tracy for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
I'm sorry, I'm a no on this one.
Ms. Setza? Did you repeat that, Ms. Setza? I didn't quite catch it.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chief Steven?
Yes.
Mr. Tishera?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas, did I call on you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I go by Zach, Mr. Zachary. You know. Mr. Mr.
Mr. Chair, the motion pauses.
Thank you, Tracy. We have a second motion if anyone would like to entertain that. Mr. Thomas, Mr. Zachary.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I move to recommend uh, TRP governing board adoption of uh ordinance twenty-four, I guess we don't have a number for that, uh, amending um ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero two, as previously amended to amend the tourist core area plan to include uh, the additions and revisions as provided in attachment B. Second.
All right. Thank you, Zach and Jason. And Tracy, back to you for a roll call vote on the second motion.
Mr. Tishera?
Yes.
Chief Steven?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Setza?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
No.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
That motion pauses.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, thank you. Thank you, John and Alyssa. Have a good rest of the day. Thank you, applicant team. Have a good rest of the day to you. That concludes item five, and I'm gonna move us on to item six, which are reports. And I will first pass this to Mr. Hester for the executive director report, including upcoming topics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman John Hester. Uh, as you've always requested, a little bit of an update on your past actions. Uh, the regional planning committee um, already heard the item you heard on climate housing for condos and mixed use design standards and recommended approval of that as Jacob reported. Uh, the threshold standards update item that you also recommended approval of, the regional planning committee recommended approval of that. Those both go to the governing board. And the governing board approved the Washoe County area plan amendment that you recommended. So that's kind of a summary of past actions you've taken and what's happened to them. Uh, upcoming, and I'm sorry, Ms. Carr isn't on the meeting right now, but I'm sure Ms. Stoller will inform her that her request for a field trip to Meeks Bay has, is being fulfilled on June twelfth. Um, what we plan to do is have you all meet us at Meeks Bay and we'll send an email out with details, but we'll have Forest Service uh, uh Washoe Tribe and TRPA staff there to show you the features of the uh, Meeks Bay Restoration Project. And we are anticipating that'll take like from nine thirty to eleven thirty. And then at twelve fifteen back here, we would have lunch for you all, those of you who want to join us. And we will invite the governing board members as well. And then at one o'clock, we would have this meeting instead of having it in the morning. And the EIS for the Meeks Bay Restoration is on your agenda that afternoon. So I think that will be a very informative uh, and um, help you make a better decision about that. And then um, as Mr. Hitchcock mentioned, there are some amendments coming up. Not next month, but in the future for the city of South Lake Tahoe and the same for Douglas County area plan. And that's all I have to report.
Thanks, John. So just a flag for APC members, it sounds like June, we'll be talking about all day.
Yep, June twelfth, all day.
All day.
Try to get an email out this week on that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Let us all know.
Yeah, please join us and uh uh, we think it'll, it'll be very informative. We've done something sort of like this with the governing board a few years ago. And uh, the fact that you've got Forest Service and tribe tribal folks there. Please honor their commitment to you to be there by showing up. I know you will, but I just.
That's a good point.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. That's exciting. I think that makes really good sense. Thanks for putting all that together. I know it's a lot of work. So, thank you. Um, fantastic. So now, I'm gonna go to Mr. Marshall, but we probably have an introduction, right, for for maybe a new council or?
Done with the APC?
We haven't done this. Oh, shoot. I'm out of the loop.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Graham has been hired as our uh what's your actual title? Associate uh, counsel to TRPA. Uh, and we brought Marcia Birch uh, on from twenty percent time to eighty percent. Uh, so we're ramping up our legal resources. Um. This is in preparation for my gradual decline and landing outside the agency. Um, we also are, uh, as you may have heard, we um hired a uh, relatively young attorney who's finishing up his clerkship with the Nevada Supreme Court uh, in July, and then he's studying for the bar in July as, as well as Graham for the Nevada bar. Uh, and then he will be joining us in uh, early September. Uh, as our kind of last addition. And then over that probably through the end of the year, I'll be tran- transitioning out of my current role and we'll see what happens.
So are you saying it's gonna take three people to replace you?
Pretty much.
Wow.
Um. Uh, so it's, it'll be up to the board to decide how to fill my slot. That's a separate hiring decision. So Graham is and, you know, any, they'll have to figure out how to, how to move that forward. Uh, and when exactly to do that.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, now I'll just kind of quickly go on to litigation report. I think we had the fastest turnaround ever in terms of someone filing litigation against us and then having it dismissed. Um, the Hard Rock casino and resort and casino, which no longer exists as an entity here um, was sued by a um uh, individual who slipped and fell on their property as a result of installing, I think, the gates to their parking garage to uh, for paid parking. Um, and we were named as a third party defendant potential liability and luckily we were able to convince them to drop the suit. Uh, in part because we had an identification agreement with Hard Rock uh, as a result of the permit to install those those uh, gates. Um, but I wanna talk a little bit more about the um, decision in the, the litigation where we weren't a party against uh, La Haunton uh, by the Sierra, the local Sierra Club uh, and Calif uh, Sport Fishing Association regarding Tahoe Keys and the control methods test. Um, if you'll bear with me, cause I think it's, it's been topical and, and you know, it's probably been a bit over, overblown. What the court decided was that the La Haunton's authorization to use pesticides or herbicides within uh, the Tahoe Keys did not fit within the exemption uh, to the general prohibition on uh, pesticide herbicide use in Lake Tahoe. Um, the court also found that uh, the EIS, EIR that was uh relied upon by La Haunton, the EIR portion for SEQA for La Haunton's obligations uh, was flawed and then it did not consider the potential for future applications uh, in its cumulative impacts uh, determination. Um, the argument there is that it was um uh, you know, it was a test. And there was, you know, we couldn't say for certain whether or not pesticides would be uh, utilized or approved in the future. And so therefore it was not a, uh, something that we should consider as a uh, likely event in the future. Uh, the court disagreed with that and uh as well as finding that uh, on the exception part that um the La Haunton did not justify under a couple of different prongs, the use of pesticides contemporaneously with the use of non-chemical methods. Um, and so it need those uh, in, according to the court, the basin prohibition on the exception to the prohibition uh, required you to run through all of those non-chemical methods testing first before you uh, tested herbicides. Now, kinda, there was no injunction sought in the litigation. So uh, the parties went ahead and uh, applied herbicides. I think you may have heard uh, reports from from staff on the, the application efforts. Uh, and that was, I believe, in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, spring of uh, one of those two years. And we're now on the third year of um, May third and last year of the test, which is the second year of uh, looking at uh, any residual both if there's any residual um, herbicide and the efficacy of the non-chemical methods to maintain the knockback that was achieved uh, through the herbicide use. So um, the court's decision invalidating the um La Haunton's approval of herbicide use uh, that has already happened is a bit academic. It definitely provides guidance for future decision-making uh, on the use of herbicides and what you would on the use of herbicides and what you would need to show. But it does not have a retroactive effect of saying that the testing that was done can't be used, that information gained can't be used for future decision-making. And so parties are still trying to figure out La Haunton is, you know, trying to figure out what, how exactly to respond to the decision, whether to appeal, whether to accept the judgment and move forward. So obviously, I think the parties involved in the approval of the test might have their disagreements with the court's language, but the question is how to move forward effectively with dealing with the infestation of invasive weeds within the Keys. And so that's kind of the basic how the decision came about and what it is. But I think it's important to remember that what the Keys, excuse me, what La Haunton was approving was the application of herbicides, not the entire control methods test. So that those parts of the control methods test that don't involve application of herbicides, i.e. what's happening now is not enjoined by the court in our in our opinion. And so those, the tests should be able to move forward in its last monitoring and application of non-chemical control methods this last year, and then all that information will be wrapped up and presented in a monitoring and efficacy report.
So the finding was just on the EIR, not the EIS?
Correct, because we were not, La Haunton, you know, was the defendant, the sole defendant. And so it was an EIR for SEQA purposes that the court was reviewing, not an EIS for TRPA purposes. Legitimately, there's a question, you know, if you were to, you know, if we had been a defendant, would the, you know, it would make sense that this court would also find a violation of TRPA's Article seven environmental documentation requirements on the same grounds, because those generally probably mimic each other in terms of SEQA and Article seven and maybe even NEPA, in terms of, you know, was there substantial evidence? You know, we think the court gave kind of short shrift to the record that was created and supported the use of chemical methods and the La Haunton's decision. But, you know, it is what it is, and so we need to figure out the best way to move forward.
Fascinating.
But if there's any questions, please let me know, or you can call me to discuss.
Thank you. Yeah, hopefully the non-chemical methods are proven effective and it's a non-issue moving forward, but that's TBD.
Yeah. And as to the Phase Two litigation, we are getting close to filing the administrative record, which will trigger briefing dates on the merits of that lawsuit. So that'll kind of proceed at pace. And if there's, you want any further detailed information, just give us a buzz.
Great. Thank you, John. Thank you, Graham.
Would it be possible for me to add something? This is Susan. Yeah. Okay, so I've I've been quite involved from the Tahoe Keys point of view in in this matter. And I think that the use of non-chemical methods was well documented prior to putting the herbicides into the water. And we've now done a complete analysis of how the controlled methods test worked over between the years twenty twenty before it started and up to right now. And what we found just very briefly was that the bio volume of the weeds that are invasive was decreased substantially, going from two hundred and ten thousand cubic meters to about a hundred and eighty thousand cubic meters. The nice surprise that we found was that the native plants increased their volume, predominantly Aladea, went from eighteen thousand cubic meters to eighty-two thousand cubic meters. So we're incredibly happy with how the environment is changing because of the controlled methods test. We're not planning to use herbicides during year three. It's only going to be non-chemical means. And then we're going to have to go through a new EIR, EIS, and we certainly hope that part of the prescription will be that we'll be able to continue using herbicides. Herbicides were only used on thirty percent of the area of the Keys, and there was absolutely no seepage into the lake or the area of the lagoons that weren't tested with the herbicides. So I just want to stay a little positive that what the Keys is doing is very productive and very useful to the environment of Lake Tahoe. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that context, Susan. Sounds like good news. I think we're good on general council status report, and I will go now to my fellow colleagues on any relevant updates you'd like to share. I'll go first, Mr. Tashara. Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Mr. Oling?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to let staff know that I'm still working with NV Energy to have them come and give a presentation to us in regards to your Resilience Corridors Project and probably or hopefully do a field visit to visit that as well. So that's in process. Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, Garth. Ms. Stoller?
Nothing for me.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
No update.
Mr. Thomas.
Nothing further, Chair.
All right. And I'm going to go online. Ms. Chandler?
Nothing to add. I kind of gave my report just then. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Drake?
One public meeting to let people know about on the North Shore, the proposed Thirty-Nine Degrees North Project in Kings Beach. The the project proponent is hosting a public meeting at the North Tahoe Event Center on the fifteenth, which is a week from today, May fifteenth, five thirty to seven thirty. For those who aren't aware, this is a pretty significant proposed mostly hotel project. We're right in the heart of Kings Beach, taking up about two blocks of land that's currently owned by Placer County. So it's a very important pivotal project. It's somewhat controversial, and I really encourage people to take a look at it, and especially if you're engaged in the North Shore, show up to the meeting, learn about it, voice your comments. Secondly, this is a bigger topic, but I wanted to just ask the question. Town Truck, you just just passed a single-use water bottle, plastic water bottle ban, and I know the City of South Lake did as well a couple of years ago. And I've been asked by many people, surprising number of people in the last few months, what TRPA is doing about this. And I'm not completely clear on what TRPA's purview is on this matter, but I do think it's a I wanted to put it out there and ask the question. Microplastics are a major issue. Water bottles are not the only source by any means, but it is kind of low hanging fruit. So putting that out to the committee as well as to John for any guidance on if if there's any movement afoot within TRPA or anything jurisdictionally that TRPA could do from a leadership standpoint on this issue.
Thanks, Kevin. Do you want to talk about that now or future or?
It can be offline. I'm just.
I think Mr. Hester's might have an answer for us.
Probably talk about it more, but in the future, but we have talked about it internally specifically about is it in our purview and how would we enforce it? And, you know, we haven't come up with a formal decision, but tentatively, it looks like it'd be a lot more effective for the local governments to enforce it. Put it in, put that kind of regulation in place and enforce it, because we really don't have ways to regulate like what's sold like they do. So anyway, but we have talked about it, and there probably will be more discussion about microplastics in general as we talk about our priorities.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I know you're in the middle of committee member comments, but if I could respond to Mr. Oling's comment, and I will get with you afterwards, we we have tentatively scheduled, and it's not finalized, for the June Governing Board to have an update on forest health, Homewood Forest Fuels Plan and the tour you were talking about. So Kat McIntyre in our EIP Department is the one kind of heading that up. But might as well mention it and put it on your calendars tentatively for the Governing Board date in June, which is the fourth Wednesday. I don't remember the date right now, but that's what we're, is it May twenty-sixth? That's what we're, you know, targeting. We don't have it finalized yet, but and part of that would be if we can either do the field visit to the NV Energy project or have them present, that would all work together, I think.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks, John. And maybe as a source control discussion item, as microplastics continue to be talked about, we can keep talking about TRPA's role or not in the water bottle man, but I think that's, excuse me, a good flag, Kevin. So thanks. Mr. McNamara, I haven't met you yet. Hello. I think I was gone last meeting and.
Hello.
Hi, any updates you'd like to share?
Just a personal update. I just had heart surgery and I'm I'm happy to be attending virtually. You guys do a terrific job. Everybody on the staff creates some very interesting and informative reports. So I just I just want to say I'm I admire everybody's work here and their expertise.
Well, that's very kind of you, and we're happy. It looks like your surgery was successful and wish you well.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
Yeah, good. Okay, Mr. Stephen.
Hello, just a quick update from the regional chiefs and law enforcement from around the basin. We've been working on a regional evacuation and communication plan since fall, meeting every month. And we're getting close to finalizing that, which will lead to some scenarios happening in everybody's county, just to kind of exercise that evacuation plan. The South Shore will see two in the near future. So we're looking forward to exercising that kind of that evacuation and communication plan that'll kind of help the coordination and all that communication moving forward. So look for that in the future.
All right. Thanks, Chad. It's a good topic. Ms. Ms. Setzer?
I don't really have any updates. I will say that our Board of Supervisors will be in Tahoe on June twenty-fifth for that board meeting, though. So we hope to see anyone who wants to provide any public comment.
Nice. Okay, good. Thank you. And lastly, Ms. Ferris.
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Heather. And my only update is similar to Emily's. Our board is actually meeting at the City Council Chambers next week on Tuesday, May fourteenth, to have a Tahoe-focused board meeting. So that's pretty exciting. We'll be doing a short field tour as well, looking mostly in the Myers area. And thanks to the city for letting us use your facility. Appreciate it. Okay, member comments completed, and this is on to item seven, public interest comments. And I'm going to ask Tracy to help me remind us all of the remote meeting rules for public interest comment.
If any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission, please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone, and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. All public comments should be as brief and concise as possible, so that all who wish to participate may do so. Testimony should not be repeated. The chair shall have the discretion to set appropriate time allotments for individual speakers, three minutes for individuals and group representatives, as well as for the total time allotted to oral public comment for a specific agenda item. No extra time for participants will be permitted by the ceding of time to others. In the interest of efficient meeting management, the chairperson reserves the right to limit the duration of each public comment period to a total of one hour. Written comments received by four P M. Yesterday were forwarded to the APC members before the meeting start time. Late comments may be distributed distributed and posted after the meeting. Any unheard comments can be submitted via email to publiccomment@trpa.gov. Please include the meeting information and agenda item in the subject line of your email. Please note, the APC is prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public that are not listed on this agenda.
Thank you, Tracy. And we will entertain public comment. I'll look to the room. Seeing none, we will go online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's one hand raised online. Doug Flaherty, please unmute to make your comment.
Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. Keep the East Shore true. That means true to its natural beauty, clarity, true to its resistance of degradation on the part of the TRPA and its partner agencies. We're compiling some use figures. Just for twenty twenty-three, Sand Harbor had a total of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight visitors in June, July twenty twenty-three, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen visitors, and in August, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-six visitors in twenty twenty-three. Our compilations of East Shore Trail users coming out to about one thousand to three thousand visits a day. And you combine that with the East Shore Express transportation from Incline to Sand Harbor, you're looking at a incredibly significant impact. The East Shore Trail was a was a destination trail primarily constructed to bring international destination visitors to Tahoe. The next segment will be from Sand Harbor to Thunderbird, which will parallel the East Shore Trail right along the highway and over the waters of Lake Tahoe. We believe that the environmental analysis that was performed by the various agencies, including the U.S. Forest Service and NDOT and and TRPA as co-conspirators was basically arbitrary and capricious. And I think that there's room where we're going to take some steps for sure. I don't threaten, we're just going to, it's just the way it's going to do and what it's going to be. You're going to need three or four attorneys because the Nevada contingent, you've got to wake up and start protecting our East Shore. This is an incredible encroachment on Lake Tahoe Basin's environment. And you can't continue to fail to protect the Nevada pristine East Shore. It's the last portions of the lake that are truly truly pristine in many ways, but that's being degraded. So anyway, that's on our radar coming up and stay tuned for more. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment.
Thank you, Catherine. I will close public comment and move us to our final item, which is item eight, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Garth. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Guessing no one's opposed. We stand adjourned eleven forty-three. Thank you all so much. Good meeting and have a great rest of the day.